Yes.
Okay.
I'm good.
I'll call the Board of County Commissioners meeting for Custer County to order. Let the record show today is June 20th, the time is 12 o'clock noon, and we are meeting at the San Isabel Lodge. Let's see, I just think we should maybe see if the sheriff would like to lead us in a pledge of allegiance. The flag is to my left.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
My pleasure entirely.
Oh, well, good. Madam Secretary, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Flower.
Present.
Commissioner Prince.
Present.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, any amendments to the agenda, Commissioner Prince? I have none. I'm gonna move this microphone over here a little. Slide that right there. Okay.
Are you done?
Thank you, yes. Thank you.
Audience introduction. Would you like to start?
Senator Washington.
If I could do this for the second one.
Cindy Flower.
Shannon Byerly, Sheriff.
Cindy Howard, Emergency Commissioner.
Thank you. It's a lunch, kind of a lunch meeting, so don't you know when I ask for introduction, some people are right in the middle of a bite. Approval of the minutes, May 31, June 7, and June 8. Commissioner Prince, have you had an opportunity to look at those?
I did, sir. I read them. I would move that we approve the minutes for January 7th, January 8th, and May 31st.
Thank you, sir. I'll second the motion. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from May 31, June 7, and June 8. Discussion?
Just like to compliment Kelly one more time for her comprehension.
Thank you, yeah. And I know they had a little mistake in there, corrected it, and sent out a new one, so we should be good to go. Hearing no further discussion, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay, motion carries. How about it?
That's your gavel?
Yeah, that's my new gavel. Commissioner Items?
Do you have anything, sir? Well, I'll tell you what I did. I met with Department of Human Services and the school on June 8th, and then we met again on June 17th. Tourism Board meeting was on the 12th. We had the Planning and Zoning Workshop on the 13th. On the 14th, there was a conflict for me. I knew that the economic development meeting at 5:30 was being attended by both you and Commissioner Candor, so I attended the Custer County Kids Workshop. It was excellent. It was a three-hour workshop, went in late to the night, it seemed. So, I was absent from one and went to the other. The School Board meeting on 17th, like I said. Then I had a meeting with Greg Smith on June 18th to discuss vacancies and other issues with the Tourism Board. And that's what I've done since last meeting.
Okay, good, that's good. Before I go through my calendar, I think I will bring the Round Mountain Water and Sanitation District site application up under Commissioner Items. I think we can probably handle this as a consent item, but Greg Maderas had sent us the site application that he sent into CD-PHE. We received that in April, I think the date was April the 3rd, and he came by and wanted to know if we were in a position to sign the site agreement, or the site application, which basically, the application asked if the county had reviewed the site application and also if the proposal conflicted with the master plan of the county. And that is, excuse me, that is the basic two points that were made in the site application itself. So, he was hoping to get that signed and get it sent off to CD-PHE as soon as he could. So, if you're okay, sir, I don't know if we need a motion to that effect, or if I can just sign that. Counselor, do you have an opinion on that? Did I send that to you? Brenda? I'm sorry, I dropped the ball.
Only 150 pages.
Yeah, it's a fairly lengthy document.
I wouldn't have read it anyway.
Before you say that, tell me it'll come with the microphone.
Yeah, yeah, we can lay a napkin over the...
Why don't you do it by motion, just to make it official?
Yeah, and the problem with that is we did not have it on the agenda. Are we okay to do that under Commissioner Items or not?
Is it gonna come back to bite us?
Uh, no, I don't believe so. I mean, it was basically, and I, let me back up, I mean, it does say, or George said, you know, the intent that you're signing off on here really is that either, if you don't sign off on it, then there must be a problem with meeting, going against the master plan. So, I talked to Jackie Hobby as well, and she said no. The other thing, it's almost a moot point because it's within the city limits of Westcliff. It's not in the county.
Okay.
So, we really don't even have jurisdiction. George Maderas also told me that it's really, that document was designed for counties that had 10 or 12 small water districts in them, and that one wasn't encroaching on another, and so on and so forth. So, I don't really think it's anything...
You don't need to do it by motion.
So, with your consent, sir, I would just sign that and get that to him. As fast as he has it. But, the application, I was just gonna pull that up real quick if you wanted to look at it. I think it's page 21. Let me just look real quick here. And this was the front of it, Jay, did you get?
Oh, yeah, I actually read 90 percent of it.
He got that originally on, it was like April 3rd.
April 3rd? Or March? No, April 3rd, yeah.
April 3rd.
Yeah.
Yeah, I read the majority of it, believe it or not.
Some of it, I mean, I know it had, when I saw the maps and stuff on it, I thought, yep, this is the document that I had gone through. Let me see what page we're on. 112 pages.
Yeah, but there's some pictures.
Yeah, that's true, there are pictures. I'm trying to find the actual wording on that to read to you real quick, but...
True, it's true.
I don't know why.
Are you looking for the application?
Yes.
Try 12, hey, where was that? I saw it in here.
It was early in the document, I know that.
Yeah, that's right, I got it in front of me.
Okay.
Get the page number. It starts on page, Appendix A, I think, on page, heaven only knows, there are page numbers, are there?
Uh, no, there are, up at the top.
Page 17.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So, then that it?
Well, mine's being read here for some reason. Okay, thank you, sir, appreciate your help. Yeah, so it's the Regulation 22 Application Form, and then the... No, that is not it. That's the, that's under the Engineering Report. Oh, yeah, there it goes, right. Okay. So, the, by signing below, the entity or agency acknowledged receipt of the proposed site location app, has reviewed the app, and may elect to provide any comments. And then with this document would be providing a recommendation concerning the application to the Water Division, or to the CD-PHE. So, if you're okay with that, sir, I will move forward and get with George tomorrow.
I will verbalize yes.
Okay, thank you. All right.
And what's the document for?
This is for Round Mountain Water and Sanitation District's application to the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. For, and it's all about their proposed location of the new wastewater treatment facility, which is gonna be right where the existing lagoons are. So, the structure's gonna change, but the use doesn't change.
The actual document, if you want for the record, is called the Site Application Report.
Yeah.
If you want to.
Okay, thank you for asking that. Good. And then, yeah, and then with that, I'll go through my calendar real quick, since our last board meeting. I am happy to report that Justified did win the Kentucky Derby. We had a Lincoln Day Dinner out at Grange Hall on the 9th of June. And then on June 11th, I attended a fire prevention meeting down at our local fire department. It was a good meeting, kinda ran by Dennis Page, and there was interesting. The federal government has decided that, in response to some fire events, that they are going to fund teams of three or four or five people to go into communities and preach the fire prevention message, basically, is that what you think? And so, they had four people there, I think the guy in the back was with that group, wasn't he? So, there were four, three ladies and a gentleman there, and they were in our community at least that day, if not part of the next, and passing out some flyers and just trying to educate people, talk to people, almost door-to-door in the businesses, about fire prevention, fire mitigation, that kind of thing. So, that was interesting, that the feds had decided, we'd better start throwing some money at, a little more money at prevention, anyway. So, it was a, it was a good meeting. Then on the 12th, as Commissioner Prince indicated, we had a Tourism Board meeting. We also had a Weed Board meeting that day, and then there was a ready, set, go fire prevention mitigation meeting in Wetmore that evening, 5:30. Cindy Howard gave her presentation to the folks down in the Wetmore area, and felt like that was certainly well worth going down and following up with that. And then on the 13th, we had our zoning resolution workshop, I believe you mentioned that, didn't you, sir? On the 14th, I met with the school district, Department of Human Services, and Commissioner Prince also was at that meeting, and then I attended the Upper Arkansas Water Conservancy District meeting in Salida on the 14th, and also attended the broadband study proposal, the job study proposal, that the company we hired out of Canada, they were in town and gave a proposal on the 14th, and then again on the 15th, and I attended both of those meetings as well. And then on the 19th, obviously, which was yesterday, Sheriff Byerly, myself, Kit Shy, Cindy Howard, sorry, met and discussed the situation surrounding fireworks. And Kit's suggestion to Sheriff Byerly as our fire officer was that we do not have those fireworks on the 4th of July. Everyone in attendance agreed, because of the obvious weather conditions, and so Kit put out a press release yesterday afternoon to that effect, that we will not have fireworks display at Lake Dewey's on the 4th of July. And he also encouraged people to continue to support all aboard Westcliff, because they're the funding agent for that 4th of July fireworks. And they usually ask for donations the night of the 4th out at Lake Dewey's, well, that opportunity's gonna go by the wayside, and that was their major fundraising activity of the year. So, Kit asked in his press release to consider, to encourage people to consider supporting all aboard Westcliff, even though they're not gonna have their fundraising opportunity out there. And I was gonna give you that, that website. I'll have to pull that up real quick and see.
Is that the GoFundMe?
Um, I'm not sure if it was. Was that the website?
Yeah, I've got it in front of me, if you want.
If you, yes, if you don't mind.
Do you want me to just read the web address?
Yeah, you can read it.
I will do my best. It is HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash, thank you, David, WWW dot GoFundMe, one word, dot com forward slash MMXV, WV dash July dash 4th, with a TH, fireworks.
Wow. It's on the webpage as well, County Website?
Yeah, that's...
I thought he said he was...
Burn was putting it on there.
Put it on there.
On Facebook as well. Yeah, it's on Facebook, too. I haven't looked on the webpage, but we were told it was gonna be there.
Yeah, that is, so... GoFundMe dot com, and then look up basically July 4th, yes.
Fire fund.
Yep, okay, thank you, sir, I did find mine, but thank you for that.
I don't see it on the front page, at least.
Okay, he may not have posted up yet. And then last night, or then we had our Custer Emergency Services meeting at 2:00 yesterday afternoon, over at the Search and Rescue Building. And we, I should've brought it up yesterday, and I failed to do that, but I wanna keep this tower, proposed tower site lease with AT&amp;T on the front burner, because they're on the agenda for the 29th. Yesterday would've been a great time to talk about that with everybody involved, but we can, I can talk about that, actually, later, so. And then last night, we had the Custer County Republican Central Committee meeting, and so that kinda covers what I've been doing. Anything else, sir? Commissioner Items? About the tower? Oh, thank you, yes. Another item I wanna bring up, under Commissioner Items, is to follow up on the email that we received, all three commissioners received from Shannon Off, the County Extension Agent. She has resigned effective June 22nd, which is this Friday, citing personal reasons. And she said it was fine for me to explain publicly that her dad had suffered a stroke back in Virginia, and she didn't have any other family members there in the area to deal with that. So, I think there were some other issues, personal issues, but she did resign, and I have spoken with Bill Nobles, the area director for extension, and he assured me first and foremost that CSU's gonna stand behind us 100 percent in moving forward with our county fair, with the 4H program, and with trying to hire a new extension agent. So, he felt like we could get a job posting put up by, within three weeks, and he felt comfortable that we should be able to have a new agent hired in September. So, I just thought that was great news compared to the timeline that we dealt with previously, was well over a year or so. If we can get that kind of turnaround with CSU, he's confident, I've talked to him about a couple of other things, some possibilities to help us out in the interim. He was gonna visit with Lou Swanson, who is the Director of 4H for the State, and probably get back to me tomorrow about that. So, he thought we could get us an interim person in place to help sign documents, sign entry forms for these fairs, National Western, Kansas City, Arizona, National Livestock Show, and those kind of things. So, if, if for some reason we were beyond that September deadline, I would imagine those entry fees will have to be in that August, September timeframe. So, he said, I just don't want you guys to worry about it. He said, we're in good shape. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, we had a wonderful group of people, in my opinion, who filled in last time when we were vague until we got Miss Orr to full-time. Can we consider either those same people or some other interim group that we can coerce, hire on a part-time basis, to come in and kind of bridge the gap? I know how important this is for our community, and I certainly don't want people to start freaking out that we're not gonna have a fair, and we're not gonna do the things we need.
Yeah, it's a great question. I spoke to Bill about that a little bit, and he said, well, what they'd really like to see happen is us get an interim extension agent.
That's what I'm talking about.
And one person come in and do that job until we get the full-time position hired, rather than try to team up with two or three different people. I know Sarah Shields was very involved as an interim 4H director last year. Beverly came in as part of that extension thing, and I'm hoping we do not have to go that route, that we can just hire an interim extension agent and keep right on moving forward.
I'm fine with that.
To me, that would be the ideal situation.
I don't want the seat empty until September, if we could avoid that.
Exactly, yeah. No, I agree with you 100 percent, and I spoke to a couple of officers of the Fair Board yesterday, and, you know, our general conversation was, obviously, the Fair Board's gonna put on this fair, we should not miss a lick. Bill Nobles also thought, if nothing else, they would authorize Diana Cox-Singer as a signatory on some documents if we have to. So, I just don't see a big, big bump in the road. I know Shannon felt terrible about the timing, and...
His family always comes first.
She indicated to Bill Nobles and the commissioners that she would be available through the 22nd via email. She is back in Virginia, so she has gone back and said she would be available up until closest business on the 22nd. So, we'll move forward with that. Hopefully, we can get those things taken care of. And just a quick update on this Commissioner Item, I wanna throw it out there, I'll put it up, if it's not already, on the 29th agenda, that tower, IGA, I think it is. The company representing AT&amp;T is still anxious to move forward with leasing some county property for a AT&amp;T tower. I believe their, their impetus is FirstNet. I think that's what they're trying to get to, is to be the first player with FirstNet. A couple of things I wanted to share with you, and I communicated him as late as this morning, or with him via email. We have looked at what our average monthly AT&amp;T bill is, and so we were thinking about that being a basis to start negotiations for a lease cost. And then they've also asked us to pick a site within a footprint that they've marked out on the county property between the Search and Rescue Building and the courthouse, and said, we would like you to tell us where you would prefer to put the tower, and then we will go from there from the negotiation standpoint. So, right now, I haven't had a chance to visit with Cindy about this today, but I did visit with Sheriff Byerly a little. They're asking for a 50 by 50 footprint, 50 by 50 foot footprint, and it kinda looks like maybe just south of the exercise yard for the jail. There's a significant area there that may work. What Evan Brooks was hoping, that we could give them enough direction so that they, he could, his company could go back to AT&amp;T, sort out a lot of the little stuff, and then when they come on the 29th, make a final presentation to us, and then hopefully, if we don't vote then, at least we've got all the information we need to vote subsequent to that. So, I don't know how we, without setting in a meeting or a workshop, and getting everybody's opinions, other than maybe through email, just circulate that, and I believe I sent that to you today. So, I will continue to try to gather information, at least to give him enough information so that he can have an idea. Instead of showing up on the 29th, he comes down from Denver to say, okay, I don't have any idea, I can't answer any of their questions, 'cause I didn't know what they were. He can't make those decisions. He's a liaison between AT&amp;T and us, so they have hired him, his company, to do that. So, that's kinda where we're at. I don't know. The helipad, if that's in the works down the road, is a little bit of an issue. He did look, the FCC, FAA regs, sorry. Because there is no helipad now, this proposed tower would not fall under any guidelines for that. Once the tower is up, then we decide to put a helipad in.
We'll walk around it.
He's not sure, but he thinks that that would kind of be a grandfathered situation, and at least then we'd know where the tower was, or is going to be. They may not have it up by then, who knows? But, they're talking about 120 feet, which would fall under the height restrictions for FAA, for lights and to be lit, but, and they are talking, did you have a chance to look at that picture, Jay? They're talking about a single pole, big metal pole. No guy wires, just, you know, big pole set on concrete pad, so I don't know. Cindy, do you have any feeling about that? I know you've communicated with me some, but...
I started to reply to the email today, but I, but I pulled off a little...
Yeah.
One, I was curious, you know, what was gonna happen with the existing tower. Then on the FirstNet issue, I was curious what our costs are anticipated to go up to. He's not gonna have that answer, but if we're, you know, the $1,200 may cover the county's costs now, but...
Right.
If we all have to upgrade smartphones and the service is much more expensive, that might be something we wanna look at. And then it may cover the county costs, but what about EMS and fire, Wetmore Fire? It's still pretty unclear to me how all these other agencies, like Search and Rescue, afford to be FirstNet players, because nobody's gonna pay my personal...
Yeah, and the FirstNet conversation is, for obvious reasons, is not really in the mix now. We were just looking at a point to start the negotiations on a lease price.
And, and just trying to get the big picture. And then we talked a little bit about, at CES, about getting someone in to figure out if that radio tower is really causing interference, or if it's more because the radios are out of tune, or a mix, and then also would this microwave site pose potential health issues or other radio interference issues? And I really think we've gotta figure out some of the answers to those questions before we, you know, we create another problem and try to solve one.
Yeah, he said in an email that the frequencies, obviously, would be FCC regulated, and those frequencies that they're talking about on their tower would not interfere with ours. He also... Pardon?
Yeah, I mean, those cell towers, they're pretty limited in their bandwidth, so that's not the bleed over, I think.
Yeah, I think we have some other issues.
It's the conjunction, all three of those, if you put it right. If you put a phone tower there, then, then the tower of the sheriff's office, which operates all the DTR radios and a bunch of DHF and certain, all that. And then you have the radio station right there at the Star Building, all of that RF that's so saturated, I think that's the bigger challenge.
Yeah, and this may not be a solution to what you're talking about, but I did have a conversation with him about putting some equipment on their tower. Initially, it started out if we put, if we allowed AT&amp;T to put a tower where one of our towers is now, that they would put our equipment on their tower included in part of the deal, so we wouldn't have two towers right there side by side. May still be a possibility if we're south of the sheriff's office that we could do away with that other tower. I don't know if it'd be worthwhile or not, but the radio tower at Search and Rescue Building, I think is another issue. I think we need to have to look at that.
The transmitter?
Yeah, the transmitter. I think we're getting some interference from that. As I mentioned at a meeting yesterday before the CES meeting, John Genovese is kind of a resident expert in that deal, 47 years in the industry, said he would start looking to see if he could help us find somebody that could come and give us a study.
Someone else mentioned the radio station owner out of Raton that said it's not properly filtered, but again, we need a subject matter expert to help us resolve those issues.
I'm hoping, you know, John maybe can get us connected to somebody who can look into that, but, so that's, that's all I have. And I'm sorry to drag on there, but...
Whatever happened to our helipad? There was a helipad supposed to be part of the clinic at the time.
Yeah, I, I always thought they were going to replace the one out north, the Dan Riggs Memorial Helipad, with one there by the clinic, but it never happened. So I think that's back in the conversation at least to see what we could do about a helipad. Attorney Items, Mr. Smith?
Well, I attended the planning commission workshop we had last week. I did some scrambling at the last minute. That runway testing at the airport was scheduled to be done last Thursday and I had to get in a last-minute agreement with the Ott Six Ranch for the $14,000. They agreed to pay seven and the county paid seven and that money should be in the treasuries.
Okay, I didn't ask.
The general fund, but they were, the, Mr. Watts said he was mailing the check the same day. I worked with Ann Barthrop on the land acquisition for the Criminal Justice Center, talked with her and talked with the attorney representing the individual who owns some land we're looking at. Nothing's been resolved there yet. At the last minute yesterday, I reviewed some proposed changes to the open burning ordinance that Shannon and Cindy had been working on. I didn't have a whole lot to contribute on that. I feel kind of bad that I wasn't more involved in that, but, and that's about all I've done since our last meeting.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Administrative Assistant Items?
I don't have anything today.
Thank you, ma'am. Staff reports, I don't believe we have any, nor I don't believe we have any unfinished business, so we'll move on to new business. We had Paul Crespignon on the agenda to give us an update on the Forest Service. I think we will skip over that for now and then if he shows up, we can certainly give him time on the agenda. So I'd like to move on to the fire ban extension. We, we had a fire ban in place. It expired, I think, two days ago.
Whether anyone knows it or not, it's still in place.
Yeah. 30 days from May 16th, so actually it was a little more than two days. But, so Sheriff Barley, your recommendations, sir, on fire, stage two fire restrictions for our county?
It needs to stay in place, to stay, I mean, conditions are no better and it could rain for a week straight. I don't know that conditions would get better in that period of time. All the counties that are adjacent to us are all in stage twos at this point, BLM, Forest Service. And there's already started to be some, some brief discussion anyhow from the Forest Service about a possible stage three if we do not get some moisture.
Yeah, the ERC number just keeps...
Yeah.
Doing its thing.
Yeah, we're, we're levels, you know, it's ever seen.
Almost record level.
At this time of year.
ERC, Energy Release Component, which really is fancy term for the amount of moisture that's in all this fuel wood laying and standing on the forest floor, so...
Yeah, we're about to the point where if anybody rubs their hands together much, it's going to start firing.
And I spoke with Fire Chief Shy, he concurs obviously with that whole assessment as well. So I would move that we extend the stage two fire ban for Custer County by resolution. And we have prepared a resolution in the event that this motion passes, beginning today and running for the next 30 days.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, sir. It's been moved and seconded to extend the fire ban, stage two fire ban for Custer County with resolution number 18-11. Discussion?
My hope is, is that by the time we get to July, we may have to re, to address this again, that we're about ready to, to put in front of you a revised burn plant options, which may then, depending on what your opinions are, where we may not have to do this every 30 days, instead change it to where once you put the resolution in, it's reviewed every 30 days, but when it stays in, in place unless there's a motion made to rescind it.
Right. We wouldn't have to write a resolution every 30 days.
Yeah, every 30 days. I think that makes it a little smoother and a little more proactive and usable, so...
Okay. Good. Thank you. Further comment from the public? Hearing none, we proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, motion carries.
Intention and sentence vote.
Yeah, that's right.
I like it. Look at that, that's very good.
Yeah, bang on one of those. So I'll give that to Commissioner Prince for his signature and then we'll give it to Kelly and then we can get it to Mr. Kanda and get his signature on it. Yeah, don't put it in the salsa. Can you imagine down the road somebody saying, this, this document looks like it has salsa on it?
I'm sorry, do one.
Other business to come before the Board of Commissioners at this time?
I think if we could keep all our meetings this show, we ought to meet here every time.
Is that a motion?
Did you happen to have an opportunity to speak with Paul Crespignon recently? I mean, did...
Not in the last...
Okay. I haven't either, I didn't know. I just knew he was asked to be on the agenda and so I think if he was going to be here, he'd probably been here, so...
I spoke to him.
Yeah, he might have been here tonight.
Yeah.
I spoke to Dennis yesterday, not Paul.
Okay.
I haven't heard any major changes, they just keep, they've been out and about all the time, you see them running around.
Okay.
We lucked out with no dry lightning last week, like, I mean, there was a little bit of nothing like they predicted.
Uh, any, any public comments come before the board?
Um, I, just to give you a heads up, I'm going to try, I'm hoping to maybe get on the, I haven't talked to Brendan yet, on the 29th. So I've been, as you probably are aware, been talking with the school pretty extensively and kind of planning on a way that we can increase school security over there during the school year. The, the more we book in grants and parent opportunities, the slimmer our, you know, the reality is that we're probably going to get a grant, but the school did make a significant financial move towards, towards that. They've allocated about $25,000 for next year, the next school year, so from August to May. And I think the best approach for us would be, yes, sir, there's a question on your face, go ahead.
It is, but I, I didn't mean to interrupt you, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's okay. So I'm thinking the best approach that we're going to have to this, because obviously $25,000 doesn't pay for, come close to paying for another deputy or another full-time person. But what we can do is through our off-work program, our off-duty work program, what we're going to do is, and I've worked with Donna Hobbie, the finance director, to make sure that we can, we can make this work, but what it'll be is on the deputies' days off, their regular days off, they will work at the school on an hourly wage and then the, and then we will submit a bill to the school every month and they'll turn around and pay for those, the time that that deputy was at work. There won't be any cost to the county other than the fact that even though they're on their days off, they are working as a sheriff's deputy there. So they would be on our, you know, for insurance purpose, for working as conflict, having links, they would still be there. And then of course, if anything significant did happen, they would come on duty as a regular deputy to make sure that everything's covered there. So we should be able to do that with very little to no cost to the county at all, other than some paperwork stuff, you know, which is built in the territory. So we're working on the MLU with the school and the contract and all that. And so hopefully we'll iron some of that out, give it to Clint for his once-over approval and we'll, I'll come to you with the, that proposal. So just something for you to think about.
Good, good. Another thing I wanted to mention quickly too is tomorrow, we are having an audit review and a budget workshop with the commissioners and our finance officer, so...
At nine o'clock.
Pardon me, nine o'clock, 9:00 AM, yes.
In our room?
Yes, in the commissioner's room. In West Cliff. Further public comment? Having no executive session, Chair will adjourn this meeting. Let the record show, it's 12:42 PM. Motion?
Food and a short meeting.
Adjourn.
Pretty hard to beat that.